Ladies and gentlemen, we have a huge group of kids that we're going to recognize for what they did here in baseball. We're going to pick up the meeting outside. We're going to hold the pledge of allegiance and dedication outside. And then we'll come in and kind of resume this one. You can sit tight or you can come outside. It's your choice.
How are you?
Doing just fine.
Good.
Stay right here. Ladies and gentlemen, we will talk meeting in order now because Texas has been having a lot of big issues. Let's please do the life of the United States of America. We give you the republic full with change, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a good time here. A great day in heaven for all of you. Thank you for helping me today, a wonderful week and a wonderful life. Lord, we thank you and we cherish this good place we live in here in the country. We ask you to walk over, God, and with all your love, we ask you to bring us back here again next year. We ask you to be able to make the night we can't, we need to be in God's courage. We ask all of us to live in peace.
First, pardon me, I want to recognize the young eight U's and other kids. So, you know, it's always a great deal of work on the side of the town. We'll come along with baseball. So, if you guys would like to come forward, we do have some local businesses and organizations for the kids.
So, all y'all eight, eight U's? Great, hey. Congratulations. That's a great accomplishment. How many of you here have a whole ball? That's why I'm so grateful. All of you won. Congratulations.
If you'd like to come up, we do.
Yeah, we'll do a little bit more in a brief one.
Yeah.
Five minutes, I said.
Yeah, I see them running.
He's fixed here.
Is it still?
It's not. He may have to leave his way.
I did proud. I did proud.
There's the agenda.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, he's got everything else to do.
Someone just snuck right in there. That's talking about.
She's ignoring you.
You should, you should use that by now. It really has changed so far.
So, we have everyone. So, next on the agenda is the flooding issue on Carline and sewer line problems. Professor Hairston, if you could come forward. Were you prepared to speak or is that?
Yeah.
Okay, if you could come up to a little podium here.
How are you doing this evening?
Good. Good to see you again.
Yeah, we just come here on behalf of Carline. We know we had flood there a long time. I've been here 10 years. So, I've been fighting flood at the church for 10 years. That's not the problem now. The problem is sewers coming up in the street. And that's the problem. And it really need to be dealt with. We can handle the water, but we can't handle the cooling. So, really, we need to get that started now. People in the community, they did raise a petition. So, we really need to get that and see what y'all are going to do about it.
Okay. So, Todd, have you been down to see, or Donny been down to check this out the week?
Yeah, those, the mayor's done saying four or five. Be corrected if I'm wrong, but there might be more than that. They were, they were manholes flooded.
Yeah, I can't.
Yeah, they, you've been handling around for you. Yeah, I can't show him.
Yeah, driving through there, I'd seen some of the manhole covers where they're coming up.
Son of a river. I'm quite sure y'all don't want y'all out like that. That's all we ask, just to take care of the house.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Is that a yes?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Is that a yes? Okay. Really, I've been here and talked, but that's like the system working. I hear a lot of guesses. But if you don't, another three or four years, we still have them. So, this thing, you've done it on your bike now, so we can follow the switch.
Not certain.
That's a health problem.
Any ideas?
And it's going into the creek, into your drinking water.
You know, I can remember years and years ago, even at another locale, manhole flooded during heavy storms. There's no sewer lines, oil, storm drain lines in this town or anywhere else in the Commonwealth that designed to hold storms outside of a 210 duration. So, a 210 duration is what DEQ, you know, Army Corps engineer makes you design for. But the sewer line that run through the town of Tassle, number one, are antiquated. We're all aware of that. Water line, due a little bit to be desired. But the undersized sewer line, because of growth over the years, is, is all over town. It's not just Carline. The Carline is obviously one of the lowest lerna lane they were floating. I mean, just all the low spots. We had water shooting out of them just about in every manhole we come to, all out, die, all rock. There were water, there was water shooting out those manholes everywhere. So, we'll continue to look at it. Actually, we've got DEQ. What's the date? September the 15th, we've actually got DEQ. I've got Thompson and Litton Quoeman. We've also met with Thrasher and waiting on quotes from Thrasher. And also talked to Matt Whitaker, which is Marshall Miller. I'm going to change that name. So, we're looking at things that we can do, not just for the sewer line, but also the different storm drains, culverts around town. And we replace them every, every year for the vibe all over town. It's just these rains have just been astronomical and they've been ridiculous. We'll continue to evaluate them, you know, see where we can improve them. We've made a lot of improvements of sizes and replaced them. We just have to continue to build.
You said that means on the 18th?
Yes.
It's the 18th, not the 15th.
15th.
We have Army Corps engineers, DEQ, here someday. You want your picture back?
Yeah, I think everybody has it. Thank you, sir. But next is Mr. Walters, flooding issue on Texas Street.
I'd like to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for hearing me out tonight, especially the mayor and Dr. Ketcher for inviting me down. Most people bring problems and just dump them on y'all. I have two solutions, if you guys are interested. It's a lot cheaper than any other way that I have seen, that I thought about. As Tom and I know, he and I have talked on the phone. You have two types of engineers, hard engineering and soft engineering. Hard engineering would be bridges, dams, anything that's concrete, bite up. Soft engineering would be using the material in the creek bed or possibly natural material being poured directly, rock baskets. I see a lot of the problem at Watts Street needing rock baskets where as the hillside comes down and then you have the wicker area being the living area and the creek is only this wide and that deep. To fix that, you could stair step, dig, dig down, out and down into the creek bed, at least a foot deep. You would probably have to run that all the way down and possibly on both sides. Maybe put one three-foot rock basket, you know, to keep it from going in people's yards. Down to the pipe at the pop shop. Now, from what I've seen, the two pipes at the pop shop are plenty big enough. They already handle any floodwater that comes out of Texas Street. What we're wanting is just to get the creek back at its natural creek bed and put the creek from the street back into the creek bed. I have the two proposals right here, the solutions that you guys are looking for and you'll agree with once you see them. Basically, the first one would be coming out Vanguard, out of the pipe. It has a natural pitch coming down, okay? Proceeding two feet deeper and bringing the creek bed four feet wider and taking that out to 100, 150 yards, drop down six inches, you're stair stepping again, all the way out. Probably a length of 400, 500 yards of Texas Street. Now, that doesn't include Watts Street. But you could do that all the way gradually down to the pop shop. That's solution one. Solution two, coming out of the pipe, would be to gradually follow the, the angle down from the pipe, proceed two more feet down and carry that straight down. Why? Because water has force. Water has a digging action. Water wants to stay naturally straight, just like a train. So, it's going to dig, it's going to be a deeper if we get in the bed, get the obstacles out. From the videos that I have on my phone as proof. Just walking within 75 to 100 yards, there's three big sand burns, dirt, whatever, whatever you want to call it, and they curve from me to the mayor, behind the mayor, to the wall, around to top, and then back again, and then it does that. Two more times in that creek. Now, there's no way a creek can, can be traveling at kind of velocity and force and expect it to make a turn. You know, you can't expect a train to do that. Eventually, it's just going to jump the burner. And the way the creeks are pointed, they're all pointing towards the public area, the homes, the street, and that's where a lot of water comes through. And these pictures that I have right here show that. It comes through at each advantage point that it can. Now, I believe if a lot of it was taken care of, two homes up from Vanguard is where the problem originates. And he and I even talked about that. It actually comes over the bed. The bed is not nowhere near deep enough. And it breaks through between two homes where there are electrical boxes. That is also another issue. I have pictures here showing the electrical boxes, the light power on them, falling in the creek. And it's not just one box or two. It's all the way down that street. Why? Because as the dirt falls in from the mountainside, and it's the same scenario as Watts Street. You've got a whole mountainside ridge and all this wicker zone is homes over here. So, the water has to come over here, especially when it's bed blocked up with three big S bars in there. Like I say, you know, it's dangerous, lethal dangerous with those boxes. I run the length of that creek and two, two of them I know were already leaning at 45-degree angle. From just what I saw after this just recent flood, maybe three weeks back, the water was this far up of electrical boxes that were up in people's yards. And it's just a matter of time until one of those boxes go over. Now, the lines, they may be protected. I want to argue there, you know. They may be protected from water, but inside those boxes are connections and earth. You know, water gets in there, guys, it's going to be really bad.
I mean, that'd be AEP or us?
Yeah, I've already contacted, after Donny made me aware of it, he told, showed Donny Christmas. Right. We've already contacted AEP. We've made them aware and again, DEQ and they're all coming in town.
Yeah, we do have, I'm glad you heard, have the people come, to include our.
I love, you know, I'd love to be here at that meeting when Army Corps is here because I actually know the permit that needs to be filed. I contacted them once and everything, but I'm working on the big project, you know, pumping water up to the top of the mountain. Want to make a power station or something. So, they weren't in office and I know they were busy. As you guys know, they're going to listen more to unity of you than they are average Joe off the street. I mean, you guys have the power, more power than I could have getting here. You know, I'm sure if, if Tassle Town Council applied to them when they, when they show up in September, that on the 15th, that, you know, they're going to listen to you guys. And they can, they can apply for grants. They can get this stuff done. I have got proof on my phone right now, video. We took care of this very similar problem over McDowell County, in the hollow where I grew up. It flooded really bad. It wiped our road completely out. The road and the creek were one. It cut a six-foot trench. You could not drive a bulldozer up in that hollow. The state couldn't get one up there. So, we had to depend on ourselves. We relied on two friends of mine that owned coal mines up there at the time. I actually asked them for permission to use their equipment, which they allowed. And we built a road out to US 52 so the state highway could get their equipment up there and finish fixing the road. But at the same time, we put dozers and then, you know, this was back before all this hobbler about BPA stuff. We put dozers in the creek. I was driving one of them. I was driving a little small V4, you know, had a blade like this tail. But the guys in front of me, they were on DAs. They were just pushing all the road out of the way. And I pushed up what was left of the rock, sand, and made burns. I made a burn about two foot high, the length of that entire road. It was done so good, and I had the video as proof, that the state president over the highway in Carver and Charleston, Virginia, came down, saw it, and he personally said, "You guys did a better job than any of us could have ever done." They, all they did was put in the black polyurethane pipe and grab it and smoothed it out on the sides where I pushed it up. And they packed that with grab and then they paved. This was 40, probably about 40 to 45 years ago. And that road has never flooded since.
So, I, I think, so we're going to have the Corps here, Army Corps of Engineers, we're going to have DEQ. The one problem we're going to run into is FEMA has designated that as a flood plain. Once FEMA has taken control of that, it's, we can't do anything. It's a federal offense to do anything with it. So, we would have to get someone like DEQ or the Army Corps to go to FEMA and say, "Look, we have to, we need the approvals to be able to get on." So, I mean, we will push from our end with Army Corps and DEQ, but they'll have to be the ones to, you know, contact FEMA because they have designated it as a flood plain.
I would at least like to pass this around to you guys, I've all experienced it.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you having me. Thank you so much.
And after we, you and I talked that day, I rode out there and I walked out and down and then I ended up with flat tires. So, I was like, I had to get out of there so I could change my tire.
I hate that.
Yeah, but I did go out the same day you and I talked.
Okay.
And took a look at it because I told you I would and I came out there.
I appreciate your time and thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Now, do you need these back or?
No, I made those for y'all.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. So, as those are going, going around, we'll continue going. So, we're going to our new business recommendation, the Trading Shops, Megan Collins.
Is that her?
And actually, her husband. Okay.
Yeah, our child's sick and she doesn't make it. She's in Bristol right now.
Okay.
In support, so I appreciate you guys letting us come here.
Well, we appreciate you taking a chance to give this right here, right? Yes. And you don't have to be all formal and come up, you know, we, we're recognizing you. You definitely speak, tell us what your business is going to entail and.
Okay. So, I prepared this. I mean, I'll just kind of go through it, but.
Okay.
Because it's not going to last. So, this is till the last minute. So, I'm Zach Collins, the wife's Megan Collins. We're formerly Tassle residents. So, basically what we're doing, we're excited to announce the new location on Main Street. It's in the original National Bank of Tassle building. So, I know it's formerly motorcycle shop before as well. So, we actually know those individuals. So, being here in Tassle, everyone knows everybody. So, I've already seen 20 people or more that I already know in the past like 30 days. It's actually humbling to be here again. I'm not just new visiting my family, but actually interacting with the community again. So, we moved away, basically we met at Disney United Methodist Church. We were just children. Terry Mullins continued that. Basically, years later, right on Main Street, we met Main Street Mullins. Then realized that we were children, you know, had met previously like as children. So, what we did is we both kind of moved away and kind of kept in contact. We went to school in Tri-Cities. We always wanted to own our own business. So, in rehandling our relationship, we came here in 2016 and we started kind of throwing around some concepts. We always had a love for like helping the community and local businesses and we knew the importance of it because we both kind of graduated in business. I actually graduated with business degree. She kind of took some classes too. But with combining that focus, you know, both our hearts was in there with community and small business. We knew the importance of, and being in small towns. So, we could actually see the significance and impact it has to, you know, bring it forward. So, what we do in Bristol, Virginia, that's right on State Street, we have what's called the Trading Shops. It's our second location. Our first was in Kingsport and that's where we kind of settled roots and we live there. What we do is we seek local vendors. So, we kind of start out at a tier, tier level. Local vendors are first and then if we have trouble with that or, you know, the waitlist is getting slammed or some, some people have some issues with the business, they move out. So, we'll go to the waitlist and now we'll reach out a little bit further. So, in Tassle, not that we're having issues, but we already have four and we've been reaching out for about two months now. So, we need y'all's help too, to help us in addition to our helplessness to do. Maybe just kind of reach out to people we know that are local vendors, makers, creators and boutiques. Well, boutiques in there, even if they don't make the item. So, again, with that tier system, it kind of goes into, we'd like to fulfill the first of locals. We hadn't tried too much, so we reached out to some of the vendors we currently have. And those vendors expressed interest, so we have about eight to 10 from the Tri-Cities coming. So, at first, you know, it was kind of bonding about it, but we think it's kind of neat because our old roots and new roots are, are meeting together. So, you guys have a little business sample of what the Tri-Cities has to offer to some of these local vendors. So, and then hopefully with that, we're able to travel and get some more local vendors as well. So, again, just kind of following back up. So, like I said, southwest Virginia region is where I focused on. And if you guys can help us in any way, did that, that'd be great. So, our business model, we're back to it. What we do, we arrived at this bit of business model because getting into small businesses is the opportunity to have a store we own without the expense of breaking work. So, what we're doing is supporting small businesses all under, under. So, we kind of take care of major portions of the business while they can just focus on their branding and what is it. Hopefully, bringing that to the community is going to help out. And again, appreciate you guys, you know, thanks, and who got us into that building, back into Tassle. So, we're just glad to be here.
And I'm sure we can, we all welcome you and we're glad that you chose to come here and so. We appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Got a good picture now.
Susan's over there with Cam.
Megan's a little bit reluctant.
You tell her, she's.
This is the word.
I know you alluded to her coming next month. Tell her it's going. That's all to you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Zach. Now, I recognize you.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I was like, I ask her, I'm going to ask her. I'm going to Tri-Cities and I'm going to ask it up.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'll be getting in touch with you. So, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The work session and public hearing and council meeting of August the 11th, 2020. I get a motion to approve the minutes. Some of it. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, minute approved. Next is the approval of financial statements and the financial report of August 2020. Need a motion for approval? Make the motion approved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of financial statements, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say a nay. All right, financial statements are approved. And next, Councilmember Davis will give us an update on the Planning Commission Committee.
Well, actually, the first Monday this month was yesterday and since it was a holiday, we did not have a meeting.
There's no meeting. So, that's a quick update. So, unfinished business, any miscellaneous? So, new business, the request for cul-de-sac on Dumpford Drive, which you should see something about it in your council packet. And Mr. Dumpford gave me a call today and has been discussing with, with Todd. If you want to give us a brief overview.
You do have a picture that we did, let's say we, I'll take the hit for it. So, it was kind of we, of a circle on Dumpford Drive, right above the upcoming theater. And I want to also apologize to Cam.
And I want to also apologize to council at this time for the packet getting out so late. Have a good excuse. But what I'd like to do is put together a committee of the police chief, Dave Mills, our building official, Chris Gurley, and also Donnie Prue, to evaluate the potential cutting off of that, of that route going around Dumper Drive. There's a couple of concerns that I have and most of them revolve around EMS. So, and I'd also like to include, uh, Jason in on that too, to represent the EMS side. Uh, but one way in, one way out. Sometimes, uh, could be a little hetsy, but before we move forward and jump to gun on that issue, I would like council to support the proceeding in that man. They'll evaluate and report back at the next meeting and finally.
Now, do you need a special vote on that or do you just need?
Uh, just ahead. No, it's fine. I'm just.
I don't think anybody's gonna be opposed to a committee put together.
Yeah.
Right by the movie theater. Yeah.
I think I'll change Sharon's address.
Yeah, I mean, it's a whole lot more to it than what makes you eye. I understand the reason uh, that he's willing to do it. We may be able to offer some alternatives. Some, some of his reasons for, that he mentioned to me, um, I know there's some alternative uh, to close the road off and putting a cul-de-sac on it. So I would just request council's let, proceed forward and negotiate.
I think with the name that you, uh, mentioned to put on that committee, I think you guys, it will knock it down the park. So, uh, next, next on the agenda, we have the approval of paving. As you'll see in your packets, there's, uh, some information about three companies that applied to do the work.
Yeah, that's correct. We had W and L AAA and, uh, BeZak. BeZak was formerly Rogers Group. BeZak was actually opened up today for Riverside. The pavement Riverside would go between the post office or the intersection all the way to the new bridge. It was put in a couple of years ago, which was a section that we destroyed over the windpipe. Um, and obviously the only other section I've got for paving this year will go from Tazle Avenue to about three hundred yards east of Bulldog Lane where that water project started at. Um, but I'd just like to ask for council's approval. Um, I've got, I've got a little bit of a description down there. I'd like to explain the council, the budget has. We've got six hundred thousand dollars allocated for paving. If you'll recall, we, uh, we still owe a debt, uh, for some previous paving. We can, uh, we, we spent ninety-nine thousand dollars on the tennis and basketball courts to have to account and the school board gave us forty-five thousand of that back. Um, so, um, we shared in that project and I know Brad, Brad's complimented that project. It's been a long time coming. But that project, we also had an emergency patch due to a water main bust early in the spring, attached a middle school on both sides of that bridge. That water line right there was, uh, thirteen foot deep in the ground. But anyway, that's going to leave a necessary balance of seventy thousand, two thirty-five, twenty-eight in a contingency line item that I'm asking to pull fifty-one thousand dollars from. So that contingency line item, right now, has got a little over a hundred. Well, it's got the full, we haven't taken any, any out of it. So I just need council's approval to award that project to W and L Construction.
I'll make that note. I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Todd, of awarding the paving to W, W L Construction, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, uh, motion carries. Todd, we'll move forward looking, I'm sure a lot of citizens are gonna be happy to see that paving done in both places.
This next one, uh, council and Brown had to put on there. We go through this here and, and you know, I, I look, I put it in there as a request for canceled.
Did we make a motion last time?
We did. We did. Okay, so we can remove it.
Move along with you, Mike. It is a different day. And that's the same number. We will let you handle this personnel matter when it comes to leave.
We'll, we'll.
Big change.
Okay.
I would like you to make a motion like three years ago.
I don't know.
He just ignores it. He just likes to do this, get under tons or under Chris's skin.
That's not true.
That's just for you. So, uh, next on the agenda is the approval of rural development code of conduct for funding for a new police cruiser.
Yeah, again, we have to, uh, get council approval to accept any federal money for grant or, or otherwise. I just need a motion for canceled, proceed on forward code of conduct. By the way, you've done this just about every year since I've been here.
I'm going to make the motion approved. Any discussion? All in favor with moving forward and approving the code of conduct for funding for a new police cruiser, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right. Motion carries. The next, uh, flooding discussion, man.
Yeah, um, just to touch on this flooding issue a, a little bit, as I mentioned earlier in, in the meeting, it seems like over the last five years, we've had a minimum of five one-hundred-year floods. And that's a fact. Uh, and probably more than that. And I, that's not me saying that. That's actual, uh, numbers that have been handed down through, to flooding agencies across the United States. But, um, it's not just Tazle. Well, everybody knows that. If you don't believe, go down and grunde right now. Bluefield, the Pan, Rich Land, I know, again, I hate to, my heart can't help but to count him and Brown, but I know he's been devastated in his building down there also. So, um, culverts, undersized culverts, I could give you a list. Um, it's been down Market Street, Bulldog Lane, other than called, let's say, Thompson Street, Fairgrounds Road. I got a phone call from an elected official a couple of months ago about a house on Fairgrounds. It's got a culvert pipe that actually runs through the yard. And during these rainstorms, there's water shooting up, out the ground like guys were up out there. And it's stormwater. But these, these problems are, are massive when it comes to expense. They're, they're not just, um, let's go fix it. Doesn't work that way, especially when you got EPA and DEQ looking at you, operating what you do every day like a puppet on a string. So we go through these processes and, you know, to, to date, um, I've lived through, as manager, three federal declarations. Um, and they were in the Eastern District. And Town Hall was actually relocated because of those federal declarations that took place up there. A lot of homes, lots of these, um, grocery stores, skips, uh, rods. I know Dr. Mullins, uh, is well aware of where those places were located at one time. Most of you probably are too. But these floodings seem to be, be amplified. And there's a, there's a no point where you say, "Let's go fix it with an operating budget that we have." Um, that defines the law, but that does not exist. So the more we reach out to federal and state entities, the more we reach out to legislators, legislators, and, you know, ask for recognition in southwest Virginia. And that's what, that's what it will take outside of the federal declaration. So if we haven't already had that federal declaration, we probably don't want to see it. Uh, the devastation of that could be astronomical. We do replace a lot and spend a lot of time after these floods, behind the scenes, doing paperwork at the sewer treatment plant, on and on and on. Just a lot that goes into these things. Recognizing that a, a distribution system or a collection system, specifically the collection system in these older towns still have sewer lines tied into storm drains, and storm drains tied into sewer lines. So a lot of people say, "Well, why don't you do a smoke test in Tazle?" Well, I'm gonna tell you, I don't have to do a smoke test. The Tazle will tell you that there's sewer lines and dam spouts connected to sewer mains. And they're out there everywhere and it's against the law. It's against the law. So the state of Virginia has actually implemented stormwater fees um, that individuals are responsible for when, when there's various types of hooks, hookups that do not meet ADP regulations. And I'm not suggesting that we jump on that by any means. I'm just saying to the, the, uh, the idea of we'll fix it, we'll get on it tomorrow, is not a possibility. Doesn't work that way. So it's a, it's a big problem. And again, DEQ and the EPA, and then when you get in those federal, the clinch and, you know, coming off of Vanguard from, from Vanguard all the way in town is a, is a federally mapped stream. So, uh, we cannot go in there and make any corrections in a federally mapped stream um, without going through the proper chain and reset. Water, wha- what you do in, in one spot when it comes to stormwater, especially surface water, doesn't only affect the downstream. It doesn't only impede the downstream, but it also affects what's going on upstream. And federal laws need us to say, say you cannot put stormwater or increase stormwater on another individual property. So it's bigger. It's a whole lot bigger than just saying, "This will work." And it doesn't take an engineer like myself to sit back and say, "This will work." Anybody can look at, look at some of these problems and say, "I know how to fix that." And, and they're probably right. It's just a lot more to it than what makes you eye. But and that's what lets you know, you know, as long as, as, uh, as I'm here, I'll continue, I'll continue to address, uh, issues of probably the worst flooding that I've seen in at least the last ten years. I sent y'all that video. Unbelievable what was coming off of Dogwood. I mean, just coming off of that mountain back there was, I'm surprised the bust was even still there, uh, much less the lower lands where we, you know, we lived down in. It, it was unbelievable. And there were rocks, there were rocks coming down uh, Dogwood, Marion area, as it was, that big around. I mean, they were, it looked like bowling balls coming down that mountain. So. And it, it created a lot, a lot of problems, a lot of costs. And we'll be spending the next two or three months just cleaning up all over town. Ninety percent of these locations that we're cleaning up, we do not have an ease before. So a lot of them are landing on the responsibility. Um, but we still, when possible, um, help out as much as we can, you know. Uh, I know one individual, I won't say his name, but the water, the stormwater was going in her front door and she opened the back door. And it's just, I mean, that's, that's one of those deals, you get back in your vehicle and you just drive away. There's nothing you can do. And it, it's just, it's just devastating. The collection system in town, nowhere, not just in Tazle, but nowhere in the Commonwealth is built to sustain that type of storm when you have infiltration like we've got in Tazle. So.
So is the meeting that's happening on the fifteenth, is that to address?
It's wide or is it? It's stormwater, mainly two locations, uh, one of them being Vanguard Dam and the other one being Laren Lane. So I've got, uh, I've got some historical data and some knowledge of older studies that was done. But sometimes it's better just to slide those aside and let, let you players that are in the house take a, take a fresh look at it. But those FEMA floodways are absolutely, uh, and how, how, the interesting thing is how, how does ever get built? Odds are the FEMA floodway was not designated until after the home was built, but they always did the floodway. So. Today, you cannot do anything in the floodway. If there's any, if there's anything in the floodway existing, if you do over with forty, fifty percent, fifty percent, you've got to totally remove it. So you can't even do it. I mean, it's, it's just so much, uh, so much land disturbing. You know, you take a, take a shovel full of, of earth here and you've just impacted, um, a new stream, a new cut. You've just moved water from, from one path to another path. And the result of that, if it's not controlled adequately, it devastates the other land. So it's a big problem and we'll continue to, to look at it. You know, one of the things that I want to do and we will do it in the next newsletter is there are streams all over town and when the water is down, it's low, people are using it as a dumping spot. So you'll see people throw grass clippings down. You see people throwing brush and tree leams down because they know the water kicked up there. And it, all it does is hit those two pipes, you know, it just clogs up and it just, it, it just, uh. So, you know, I've always said that, um, local governments are world's worst communicator. And I honestly believe that. So we will, we will keep working to expand our communication level to public and educate. And, uh, you know, we all work together as a team in this community to try to, to try to address some of this flooding and some of the other issues we've got. But again, I'll be interested in seeing what, uh, what all the suits have to say coming in later on.
I would say that car loan definitely needs to be put on that agenda too, especially if we have sewer.
Absolutely. This becomes a big health hazard.
Yes.
Uh, council, any other questions for Todd? Can I use this flag? Okay, so we'll move on to our, uh, public comment section. Anybody sign in?
Those two folks in Stoker on three B and C.
Okay, so, uh.
Texas and Colin.
Yeah, okay.
Just Kerry, Mr. Walters and Urban Harrison.
Okay, so, uh, next, any, uh, council comments?
I have one, please. Um, I think pretty much everybody in this room knows about the passing of Frank Barnes. And a lot of us knew him and what he's meant to this community. He was one of the main fundraisers that led the charge for the YMCA that I'm sure wouldn't be here without the work that Frank did and the, uh, money that he was able to raise. And he's also the person that Brad and Todd have been working with with Donnie to build the trail that's going to extend Lincolnshire from the back end of Lincolnshire up to the old salt dump. So I spoke to his brother Jeff today. Um, Brad was kind enough to give me his number and asked if the family would be okay with us naming that trail after Frank Barnes. And I'd like to make a motion tonight to name that trail the Frank Barnes Trail or whatever is appropriate with his name on it, um, once you speak to, um, his wife and Jeff.
Absolutely.
Can we get a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. I think that's a great idea, Chris. Definitely deserving. Ladies and gentlemen, that's going to, uh, conclude our, uh, public session of the, uh, council meeting. Uh, we do appreciate, you know, hopefully this pandemic will be over, you know. We do appreciate, you know, hopefully this pandemic will be over, you know, when we can fill up all these seats. I love seeing people come out and, you know, voice of their concerns or, you know, saying good job or whatever. And us getting to recognize businesses like we did, hopefully we can take away these X's before too long and have a lot more people here. But thank you all for coming out. We really do appreciate it.